We'll call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, June 8th, 2020, on Board of Supervisors meeting. We will have the invocation and the pledge allegiance led by Mr. Tiller. Please stand.
Let us pray. And most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this wonderful county that we all live in. Be with us now as we conduct this meeting and see that we do it in a manner that is most pleasing to you. For these things, we ask in your most holy name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. We want to now have the roll call by Ms. Watkins.
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. First on our agenda is the consent agenda. Questions, concerns, revisions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Evelyn.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and that it be made part of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Next on our agenda is special presentations. What a wonderful time. Tonight, we were going to recognize Mr. Edward W. Pollard for his service on the New Kent Planning Commission. Mr. Pollard is not here, however, Mr. Tiller sit with him, so he will read his recognition, please.
Sure. Yes, I served with Mr. Pollard for sixteen years, I guess, on the Planning Commission. Eight years on the planning and then eight years as the board rep to the Planning Commission. It's a resolution recognizing Edward W. Pollard for his service on the New Kent County Planning Commission. Whereas Edward W. Pollard was first appointed by the New Kent County Board of Supervisors to serve as District Five representative to the New Kent County Planning Commission on January thirteenth, two thousand and three, and continued to serve until December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. And whereas Mr. Pollard has also represented the citizens of New Kent County by his service on the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, and whereas Mr. Pollard, who is well-known for his wise leadership and dedication to public service, has been instrumental in supporting and guiding the development of New Kent County. And whereas Mr. Pollard is a man of integrity and honor and is well-respected by the citizens of New Kent County and the members of other agencies across the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas not only has he served as a member of the New Kent County Planning Commission for seventeen years, he has also served as community and church in many other ways. And now therefore be it resolved by the New Kent County Board of Supervisors that Edward W. Pollard is hereby recognized and thanked for his service and dedication to New Kent County and the New Kent County Planning Commission. The Board of Supervisors wishes to, wishes him well in all of his future endeavors. Signed by Rodney Hathaway, County Administrator, and Patricia Page, Board Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So hopefully, Mr. Pollard is somewhere looking at this. Nothing gives me more joy than to recognize our young people. And so I have the distinct honor of a proclamation, and the proclamation is for my swim coach. And yeah, I'm not ashamed to say it now. I waited until I was over sixty years old to decide that I need somebody to help me so I won't be scared to jump off the deep end. And so Ms. Jones was willing to help me over that, so thank you for that. So however, this proclamation is for something totally different. It is the Girl Scout Gold Award recipient, and it's for Juliana L. Jones. Whereas Juliana L. Jones, a member of the Girl Scout Troop Five Seventy-three and a student at James Madison University, was recognized in February twenty seventeen by the Girl Scouts of the Commonwealth of Virginia for successfully completing all requirements for the Girl Scout Gold Award. And whereas we commend Juliana, who has distinguished herself by earning the Gold Award, the highest level of achievement in the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, which is earned by less than six percent of eligible girls in the Girl Scouts of America. And whereas friends, family, and the community have supported her on her attainment of the Gold Award and recognize the faithful and steady path she has taken within the scouting organization. And whereas we further commend Juliana for her Gold Award project, which was the construction of a May Day Tower at the James City County Fire Station Five. This project encompasses start-to-finish construction, including research, design, materials list, budget, building code, and fire chief approvals, in addition to accurate construction with volunteers. We could use you. This tower still serves as a training site for volunteer and future firefighters. And whereas scouting has been an integral part of the community for many years and a positive influence on our youth and Girl Scout Troop Five Seventy-three. And Juliana L. Jones most particularly embody the spirit of scouting in America. And whereas Juliana, I finally got it, is committed to the ideas and the creed of Girl Scouts and has shown dedication in her pursuits in achieving the Gold Award. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the New Kent County Board of Supervisors on this eighth day of June, twenty twenty, thus hereby recognize and congratulate Juliana, a L. Jones Girl Scout Gold Award recipient for this significant life achievement, thanks her for the time and the effort spent to better herself and the community, and wishes her well in all of her future endeavors. Signed by Rodney Hathaway, Clerk of the Board, and yours truly, Board Chairwoman.
Thank you so much, Kim.
I know.
And it just sounded today that she got certified to drive, what's this one?
The internet.
The internet and the fire truck, so.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And so now our Girl Scout Gold recognition is for Lauren Turner. And Lauren Turner is the, she is the daughter of a proud Kim Turner, our Parks and Rec Director here in New Kent County. And Mr. Lockwood will present your award.
Thank you, Ms. Page, and thank you, Lauren, for letting me take my mask off for a few minutes. This proclamation is by the Board of Supervisors of New Kent County for the Girl Scouts Gold Award recipient Lauren Turner. Whereas Lauren Turner, a member of the New Kent Girl Scout Troop Sixty-five Seventy-one and a student at New Kent High School, was recognized on April twenty-first, twenty twenty by the Girl Scouts Commonwealth Council of Virginia for successfully completing all the requirements of the Girl Scout Gold Award. And whereas we commend Lauren, who has distinguished herself by earning the Gold Award, the highest level of achievement in the Girl Scouts of the United States, which is earned by less than six percent of eligible girls in the Girl Scouts of America. And whereas friends, family, and the community have supported her on her attainment of the Gold Award and recognize the faithful and steady path she has taken within the scouting organization. And whereas we further commend Lauren, who for her Gold Award project organized a disability awareness fair incorporating education, sensory activities, and a movie event for the community. And there's more. And whereas scouting has been an integral part of the New Kent County community for many years and a positive influence on our youth and the Girl Scouts Troop Sixty-five Seventy-one. And Lauren Turner most particularly embody the spirit of scouting in America. And whereas Lauren is committed to the ideals and creed of the Girl Scouts and has shown dedication in her pursuits in achieving the Gold Award and should be considered as an example of one of New Kent's community-minded and goal-oriented young women. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the New Kent Board, County Board of Supervisors on this eighth day of June, twenty twenty, does hereby recognize and congratulate Lauren Turner, Girl Scout Gold Award recipient for this significant life achievement, thanks her for the time and effort spent to better herself and the community and wishes her well in all her future endeavors. This is signed by Rodney Hathaway, Clerk of the Board, and Patricia Page, Board Chair. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
We should do these every, every time.
Every, every time, I'm telling you, to Lauren and to Juliana, we just are so appreciative that you allow us to recognize you today. And just know that not only you're supported by your family, but we as a board support you in your future endeavors. And I mean, anytime you have accomplishments, we will just, we don't mind you having your family over here. Hopefully, we can open this place up soon. And we can do more recognitions of our young people here in the county. So again, thank you, and to your parents, Mr. and Ms. Jones, and to Ms. Turner, thank you so much for a job rate done. And to Grandma, hey, and Dad, and Sister. And they're always here volunteering around the county with projects. I hope they're volunteering. Well, we just said Kim's letting them volunteer and not making them. And so they're always here and around the county, so we thank you again so very much. All right. So as we move on, it's time for our citizens' comment period. Thank you. So first on our citizen's comment period is Mr. Scott Meister. If you will come forward, sir. You have three minutes, and we ask that you state your name and your address for us, please.
So my understanding was I get a little more than three as I'm speaking on behalf of New Kent Youth Baseball Association?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect.
Seven?
All right. My name is Scott Meister, and as I said, I'm here on behalf of New Kent Youth Baseball Association as their president.
Your address, sir?
Five-one-two-eight Hunter's Meadow Place.
Is that New Kent?
Henrico.
Thank you.
And I am here because youth sports in New Kent County are currently closed while Henrico, Hanover, and Chesterfield Counties are all currently open. And Williamsburg, James City County is slated to open in July. I'm also here to petition the Board of Supervisors to open up all fall and winter sports, football, soccer, basketball, on time with minimum restrictions. Youth sports in New Kent County need to be at the top of the county's radar despite the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, I do have a few facts to share, and I have some pamphlets that I'll pass out. But the facts that support these statements, why I'm here. Sports tourism visitors provide taxes that can fund schools and offset county resident taxes. Henrico County brought in fifty-three point four million dollars in two thousand and eighteen with impact through restaurants, hotels, and meals tax because of youth sports. Chesterfield County brought in forty-one million dollars in two thousand Chesterfield County brought in $41 million in 2018 because of impacts of youth sports. In 2019, our neighbor Williamsburg brought in $9 million from youth sports. 63% of American families spend between $100 and $500 per child per month on sporting activities. From 2016 through 2019, New Kent Youth Baseball has brought in 73 teams and 768 families from outside of New Kent to spend their dollars here. We were estimated to bring in 32 teams and an additional 384 families in 2020. Hotel development in New Kent would help capture more dollars from sports tourism industry. And if you need a New Kent reference, feel free to talk to the folks at Ed Allen because they have been packed at every tournament that we have brought in. Lights at Pine Fork Park would also help capture sports tourism dollars, particularly through the fall. Thank you for listening to me. I'd like to pass you these packets for your review, um, and for your information. And I'm also available to answer any questions. And a lot of the information that you're getting, um, in my conversations with Mr. Hathaway, he had asked if we had any, um, prevention methods or anything that we could open up baseball earlier. Um, so you'll see plenty of documentation of things that we had all the way back in Looking to open up with the intention of opening up this weekend, June 13th. Do we have, was there any questions?
We don't have any questions. So we thank you so much, sir, for being here.
Thank you for, uh, letting me speak.
Next on the gen, next we have Mr. James C. Fopp.
Evening, Board. My name is James Christopher Fopp. I reside in 11090 Creek's Edge Road, New Kent, Virginia. And, uh, first I just want to let y'all know, I was born and raised in Newport News, moved to the, uh, James City County about 11 years ago and just moved into the county here in December 16th. We came over, me and my family, for part of it because of the youth sports with my younger son playing baseball and enjoying camaraderie of everybody else. So we've done it. First, I got a couple of facts that, um, I found today, which everybody can have, just on there with the COVID-19. It's Hanover County, 322 cases, 24 deaths. Henrico County, 1,754 cases, 133 deaths. Chesterfield County, 1,461 cases, 35 deaths. James City County, 205 cases, 15 deaths. New Kent, 36 cases, one death. And that one death, um, with an idle of 45 days, we had idle where either we didn't change at all. And 71 days since that one death that we did have. And with me saying that is the reasoning is if you look at those, those that are surrounding counties that we have that, you know, conjoin unto us or within, you know, 45 minutes. And, um, and all those Hanover, Henrico, and Chesterfield, like Mr. Meister had said, had opened for sports. And, um, James City County is, some sports I've heard through an email today with my oldest son still plays for Ty Water Sharks, he plays for New Kent, but they do practice some in James City County, saying they're going to open on a limited basis, maybe as soon as June 10th with some programs that haven't said indefinitely what's going on. But, um, with baseball, you know, I've been, played baseball my whole life through college and also, and, uh, just want to take in consideration, I know majority of everybody knows about baseball, but almost every position in baseball is roughly more than six feet apart. Every player that we play with has their own gear, their helmet, their bats, their water bottles. And as of right now, our team, as of last week, is traveling to these counties that I'm mentioning that is worse off than ours, so we can't practice. You know, and some of us, I, I, I work for the foundation with Clonan Williamsburg. So I'm driving from James City County or city of Williamsburg, home to New Kent, pick up my son, and then driving into Hanover and Henrico to practice twice a week. And all I ask for is consideration is that y'all look at the numbers, see where we're at, and see if we can't get a, a better date that we can start than, as of from what I've heard, we don't even have a date. At first I heard it was maybe in June, maybe to July, but I just want y'all to consider opening sports up because a lot of our kids, majority of them that do have kids, know that there's not a lot going on. And my son loves baseball. I have been taking him up here by myself, doing some stuff, you know, but at the end of the day, we need other kids. And I'm not asking for an indoor place to do, but I would like for the consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. I thank both of you for your comments this evening. Just to let you know that we will indeed take, uh, your comments into consideration as we strive here in New Kent because one death is a death. And so, um, we don't take it lightly, nor do we take lightly the safety of our staff and all of our residents of this great county. So again, thank you for being here and speaking this evening. Our residents report, uh, VDOT is probably at home watching us with enthusiasm. And so, um, I would ask if you have anything for them that you would email them. And, um, so next on the agenda.
Excuse me, Ms. Page?
I'm sorry.
Uh, can I get the contact information for the new, the new guy from VDOT?
Sure.
Because, uh, I think I've had this last meeting, so I don't know if we have a new guy, I haven't met him yet.
Sure. I'll, I'll email that out to all, all the board members.
Okay.
They do, yes.
Yeah. Okay. You're welcome, sir. Um, we have a presentation. It is Route 155, roadway lighting project, engineering and design. I can't administer it, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Um, at our work session, um, at our last work session meeting, it was asked that this item be included in this meeting's agenda and reconsidered. Uh, what's being reconsidered is a plan that you have in, in your pot, in your packet that involves lighting, um, that begins at the exit 214 ramp and extends south to the intersection along 155 to the, um, Kintland Trail Courthouse Road, um, area. You also received an email last Tuesday, I believe, from Chief Bailey, who currently serves as the Chairman of the Transportation Safety Commission. In that email, it included various letters that has been sent, um, regarding various improvements that they've identified that are needed around, around the county. Just to read one of those letters, and I believe there's about nine or 10 letters there. Letter dated January 11th, 2020. This is coming from Chief Bailey as Chairman of the Transportation Safety Committee. Um, item four in his letter, it states, "North Courthouse Road, Kintland Trail to I-64. This area has been a constant concern for New Kent County after multiple crashes and a triple fatality. The redesigned intersection and area still creating issues for many traveling through this area. We are requesting that lighting be placed in this area from the intersection of North Courthouse Road, Kintland Trail, down to the westbound exit ramp of I-64." So that is a request that we received, uh, from Transportation Safety Commission in, in early January. Um, and in further conversations that I've had, um, with members of the Transportation Safety Commission, um, they brought to my attention and something that, after thinking about it, I, I think it is an issue, definitely think it's an issue. When you're traveling north on I-6, on Courthouse Road, Route 155, a lot of people get confused as far as where to exit off onto I-64. In fact, there's been instances, I've been made aware, that people are exiting off on the I-64 exit ramp. So they're going in the wrong direction of the ramp. Um, and it is believed that better lighting would improve the, the visibility of the signage that's currently in place. Um, that's just one instance of that stretcher road that's been identified as, as an issue. I presented to you, uh, two work sessions ago, um, a quote that I received from Bowman and Associates to study that area as far as develop the engineering plans to add lighting. That quote totaled $9,700. That quote is still good if this is to be reconsidered. Um, and if you wanted to change the scope of this project by just looking at one intersection and not the whole stretch, I could definitely go back to Bowman and I think, um, there would be a reduction in, in that quote. Be happy to answer any questions at this time. And you have the, the plan in your packet as far as the area that we're looking at providing lighting to.
Are there any questions, Mr. Hathaway? Or, or, uh, Mr. Bailey, Deputy Bailey?
Yeah. Most of those accidents, well, I know that triple fatality, that was in the daytime, right? Or is it many accidents at night as well?
We're, we're having some. A lot of them tend to be in the late afternoon, three, four, five o'clock range. But we have had some in the, later on in the evening. The issue that we've also got, we, we can account for the crashes that we've had, but we can't account for the near misses that we have, but which I would say those number pretty high. Uh, the, the intersection itself is just a confusing intersection. We have vehicles that are not getting into the left turn lane where they should enter the lane. They're actually getting up straight across from Chesapeake Circle, realizing they've missed the left turn lane and then they're cutting across in front of traffic. Um, you know, I, I do know that several crashes, I think it was two crashes within a, a 15-hour period right after, uh, Rosie's Colonial Downs reopened last year.
Any other questions of Chief Bailey?
I'm sure.
Mr. Tiller?
Um, Chief, didn't VDOT re-surface the road and re-stripe all that since that timeframe?
They have resurfaced it, yes, sir. But the problem we've had is they actually tapered or shortened the actual left turn lane instead of entering that left turn lane down near the, the exit ramp of the interstate. They actually took it about halfway up the hill. And the problem we have is the signage, I think, is also an issue with Rosie's or Colonial Downs. There's really nothing there telling them that they need to make that left turn or to be in that left turn lane. I do know that, I, I think early on when Rosie's and Colonial Downs was looking to come, that was in some of the early meetings we had, that was a request for some signage from them, you know, advising the public that that turn was coming up instead of being right there at the intersection.
Any other questions?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Lockwood?
Is it safe to say that the problem is the intersection and the signage and just the whole thing is a mess more so than the lighting that would be? Uh, actually, I don't think we need to address that, but, uh, it's, it's just a screwed-up intersection. And I, I think we should be putting the squeeze on VDOT to fix the problem that they created because I've been through there plenty of times and it's confusing. You know, if, if you're somebody just coming off the interstate and have never been to Colonial Downs, uh, good luck, you know? I think we should be talking to VDOT about fixing the problem that they've created there. And, uh, you know, Rosie's and Colonial Downs are great partners for New Kent. I mean, I, I know they are concerned about the safety of our, our visitors and our residents. So, you know, maybe we can get something going with VDOT and, and the state and, and fix that problem, put a roundabout, do something to define that area better. I mean, it's like 15 lanes wide for three lanes of traffic. It's ridiculous. And I'm not saying no to your lights, Mr. Steers. I'm just saying.
Madam Chairman.
You finished, Mr. Lockwood?
I'm good.
Mr. Steers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Lockwood, uh, VDOT is at every one of our meetings. They serve on the Transportation Safety Commission. Uh, usually Marsha Winn is there and at least two or three other superintendents. So everything that you're saying has already been discussed, re-discussed, rehashed, and gone over many times. VDOT has told us that they have done all they're going to do to that intersection. And there is no red light going in, there is no, um, roundabout, and they've made all the, um, improvements to the intersection. And, uh, like I said, they, they are very aware of it. They sit on the Transportation Safety Commission. So you, you're saying we need to go back to VDOT. They're, they are with us. I mean, they're the ones making these recommendations also. Thank you.
Ms. Evelyn?
Uh, Chief, what is your opinion? Do you think lights will help? I mean, do you think that's, I mean, a study is warranted?
I do think lights would help what we currently have. I, I mean, I do know that the Transportation Safety Commission has recommended over the years a traffic signal there, and, and VDOT has turned that down. We've had discussions about a roundabout and VDOT was studying that. Uh, I think the other issue that we run into with the roundabout at the top, it's at the top of a hill. And I think it would be very difficult to, for the traveling, traveling public to traverse that area with it sitting at the top of the hill. Um, my understanding from them, from the last discussion we had, and it's been probably a year and a half or so ago, was it seemed like the burden of the funding was going to be on the county to actually put that in, that it was not something that they were going to put in.
But the problem though, that intersection, you know, when you're coming out of Ferkshire and coming out of the Dairy Queen is, they're not, they're all set.
It is a bad intersection. I mean, there's no doubt about that. I, I think the, the request, I think, from the commission for the lighting was it would at least light that area up to make it more visible during the evening hours where you may be able to have a little bit more visibility of other traffic as far as where they are. It, it is, it's a terrible intersection.
And it's bad down by the interchange as well?
We're having a fair number of crashes at the, at the exits of the interstate as well, yes, sir.
So you think, you think light, lighting could be just warranted down by the interchange? Or you think it needs to be the whole stretch?
My personal preference, and I think that what was presented after the Transportation Safety Commission meeting was that entire stretch from the exit of the interstate to the entrance to Kintland Trail.
Okay.
So my question is, if, um, majority of the crashes are happening between three and four when it's daylight, what is the light going to do?
Well, like I said.
I mean, is it because it's more traffic during that time? I'm just trying to understand.
It certainly is, there, there is certainly more traffic during that time. A lot of that is when people are coming home from work, they're traveling through there. Uh, I, I think Chief Opett had written a, a letter also regarding the issue with the bus that was nearly struck at the intersection. Overall, the intersection is just a bad intersection. It's probably one of the worst intersections that we currently have in the county. Uh, I think the issue with the lights was it, it is extremely dark if you go through there at night and it would just add some visibility to the road markings and everything else, the surroundings that are in that area.
And so if we, we, if we spend the money for this study, do we know how we're going to fund it, the project?
A lot of that depends on the, the cost, um, but I'm assuming that this would be a capital project, therefore we would use capital fund funds to fund the project. Now, I, I will say too, in a couple of months, um, I believe I will be prepared to present to you, um, guidelines on a new process that's being created as part of the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, um, where next year we will have revenue coming in for transportation projects. Uh, we won't see that revenue until 2021. Um, and if we want to do something sooner, then we would look at capital funds.
Any other questions, concerns? Thank you, Ms. Hathaway, for the presentation. Thank you, Ms. Hathaway, for the presentation. Um, and we will take it into consideration. Item two is the adoption of Resolution R dash twenty-eight dash twenty, supporting the reopening of Rosie's Ga- Rosie's Gaming Emporium. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You have before you, um, at your seating, a revised resolution that's marked revised. So I'm gonna speak from this resolution. We have had conversations with the owner of, um, Rosie's and Colonial Downs, and, who has asked us to voice our support, uh, for the reopening of Rosie's and Colonial Downs. Several weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, the governor put out Executive Order Number Sixty-five, um, which basically moves the county into the second phase, phase two of the reopening plan. And under Item B-one of that Executive Order, it specifically calls out historic horse racing facilities as uses that will continue to be restricted from opening, uh, during this second phase of, of operations. Therefore, and there are casinos and similar facilities across the country that are beginning to, to reopen. And in fact, I believe we included in, in the resolution that out of the nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine casinos across the country that currently exist, four-hundred-and-eighty-six, um, are opened as of June fifth. We are asking the governor to reconsider his position on historic horse racing facilities, um, and allow Rosie's Gaming to open during this current second phase of the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. Are there any, uh, questions or comments regarding this resolution?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Evelyn?
Uh, I see in the, uh, fourth, uh, line here, uh, where it's talking about accommodating, uh, growth and money that the county receives, says over the last ten years?
Well, what this, uh, what this states is that the money that we currently receive from Rosie's, uh, facilities goes towards needed capital projects to support the growth that we've experienced over the last ten years.
Any other questions, comments?
That clears it up. Thank you.
Uh, one thing, um, I, I would like to say is that, uh, Rosie's has been a great community partner, not only here in New Kent County, but at all of their, um, localities. Um, I don't know if you had the opportunity to look at their reopening plan, um, but they went to great lengths, um, to, um, protect, um, their guests as they come in, um, doing it by appointment. I can only imagine, um, two hours and then closing the whole place and, uh, a thorough cleaning and then reopening for, uh, another two hour, um, for another two hours. And so, um, and then offering masks to everyone. And here at the county, we realize how much masks cost. Um, but they're doing that, would do that not only at our New Kent, um, location, but at all locations. Um, so, um, I, I will applaud them. They have not, um, furloughed any of their employees. And, um, for us, they have, um, partially because of Colonial, Colonial Downs and Rosie's, um, we were able to take in consideration some capital projects that would have been years down the road. And so, uh, with that being said, I would ask if we have a motion from the board for this resolution.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Lockwood?
I move to adopt Resolution R twenty-eight dash twenty, supporting the reopening of Rosie's Gaming Emporium.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Ms. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Um.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Steers?
I would like to say that Rosie's Restaurant is reopening this Wednesday in New Kent only. So they are reopening.
Thank you. Will that just be, um, takeout or will it-
No, the restaurant's open.
All right. Thank you.
Outdoor seating, indoor seating, um, on Wednesday.
Thank you. So we asked that you go out and support not only Rosie's, but all of our restaurants and our businesses in the county that are reopening, um, practicing safe, uh, social distancing. All right. And at this time, we will move to our elected officials' report. Mr. Tiller?
Uh, nothing right now, Madam Chair.
Mr. Evelyn?
Uh, I would just like to congratulate all the, uh, twenty-twenty graduates at New Kent High School. Uh, my son being one of them. We just went, uh, had graduation, uh, over at the high school for the first time. So I would like to applaud all the school board staff for what they're doing for the seniors there, giving them a little ten-minute, mini walk across the stage, uh, to get their diploma. And it, it was very well organized. Uh, Ms. Chisenhall did a lot of that work and a lot of people at the high school. So I just wanna thank the school board and their staff for that.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Um, well, it looks like we've got a busy weekend coming up in the county this, this weekend. And, uh, one of the things that's going on is the, uh, county, Clean County, uh, Commission, uh, recycling event that'll be occurring this Saturday from nine o'clock to one o'clock. They're gonna be recycling all kinds of stuff. The shredder truck will be there. They're gonna be pulverizing your electronics and even taking tires. So it's gonna be a rain or shine event, and, uh, bring all your junk that you wanna get rid of that's recyclable. Oh, also, uh, my pet peeve, my pet project, Proclaiming Grace Outreach is reopening their thrift spot, um, this Saturday, uh, from eight o'clock to four o'clock. So they're gonna be figuring out a way to do the safe distancing while they're opening and kinda getting things back on track. Thank you.
So will that, um, eliminate your, um, your acting role now on, on Thursday nights?
Uh, at least temporarily. We do plan on bringing that back later on when we can kinda organize things.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yes. It's been very successful. Not by acting, but the, the fundraising part of it.
Mr. Steers?
I have nothing to report. Thanks.
All right. Um, first of all, I would like to join in with Mr. Evelyn, and congratulations, um, to all of our twenty-twenty graduates. Um, I think, uh, we should commend our school board for a job well done. Um, I have seen on Facebook and TV all the different ways, creative ways that, um, they're finding to celebrate, um, such a great accomplishment. And so truly appreciate, appreciative of what we're doing here in New Kent County. Um, also at this time, I wanna thank our New Kent County staff, um, for the great job that we're doing, um, during these unforeseen times and, um, managing our county and, um, working with excellence to, um, serve our residents of New Kent. Um, our sheriff this evening is absent, and, um, he's absent because he was invited to join in with a, I'm not gonna call it a march, so we'll say a peaceful walk along Patriots Landing. And, um, Patriots Landing, um, wanted to organize, um, this afternoon from seven into eight, and invited the, um, the sheriff over. And it is just a peaceful evening walk for solidarity against neighbor, amongst neighbors and friends in accordance with current government mandates. Um, and so our sheriff, um, a great, um, a great statue in our community, is over and supporting, um, our neighbors at Patriots Landing this evening. So we thank him for that. And we thank you, Chief Bailey, for your time here with us today. Also, we thank you Lieutenant, uh, Barber for, um, checking us as we come in, screening us, ma'am. And so we thank you so much for your time after a long day work to do that for us. Um, and, um, I think a pride and joy that, uh, the county is doing. And I'll let Mr. Hathaway speak on our farmer's market. And, um, so with that, we'd just like to turn it over to Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I do have several items to, uh, report on during our staff report section. Um, and first item, I will give the floor to our Assistant County Administrator, Justin Stotter, uh, to present on our plans for reopening operations of the county.
Uh, good evening. Um, just to fill the board in, a quick update on our plans, what's been accomplished thus far. Um, I've got a quick little rundown here. Uh, the history, uh, Friday, March thirteenth, uh, the board declared a local emergency, um, which closed all public buildings, um, starting Monday, March sixteenth. From the sixteenth through the twenty-seventh, uh, staff reported as normal, even though the buildings were closed to the public. Uh, March thirtieth was the start of operations with the reduced staffing plans in place. All departments created staffing plans, um, in order to identify staff members who'd be present on certain days during certain times, um, in the physical workplace, while also preparing plans for being out of the office, uh, taking home, uh, computers, iPads, necessities to do work outside of the office. Uh, it also identified any impacts that were, or changes to service delivery, um, such as mailing in permits rather than physically dropping off, or utilizing Dropbox in the parking lot rather than bringing in payments. Um, current operations have been in place, uh, from March thirtieth until today. Uh, we're still on a limited staffing plan. Um, just a couple of numbers to give you an idea of where the county's at. Uh, Stanif, um, applications to social services were at twenty-six, Medicaid were at eighty-five, and SNAP applications were up to a hundred and sixty-seven. Uh, the same period last year, we were at seventy-seven. So it's almost a hundred, uh, applications up. Community development, your environmental, building planning, um, there were about five-hundred-and-sixty permit applications received in the timeframe with about five-hundred-and-forty issued, um, with the remainder still under review. Um, those numbers are above the, uh, two thousand and nineteen numbers for the same period, uh, by about seventy-five or so. So even with the increased workload, we're still kicking permits out. Um, staff's still responding, uh, taking emails, answering calls. Um, in addition, individual PPE has been provided by FIRE to all department staffs, including face masks, hand sanitizers, um, as well as the installation of Plexiglas sneeze guards at all of public service counters. Um, in anticipation of reopening on the fifteenth, um, General Services has been back, been brought back, uh, full-time starting today to do a deep clean of all the facilities, get everything sanitized before all staff and public return. Um, which takes us to our planning, uh, from today looking forward. Uh, we implemented a county operations task force that had the first meeting in beginning of May. It included, uh, senior staff, um, that encompassed a couple of different departments as well as a couple of different facilities. So all voices could be heard. Um, a lot of our facilities have individual specific items that a blanket approach won't apply. Um, based on the outcome, or, they were all given a survey to complete, um, that kinda listed those requirements, what they would need to open to the public, uh, upon whatever date that would be, uh, whether it be signage, additional PPE, um, physical barriers to direct traffic, things along those lines. Um, based on that survey and the outcomes, um, emergency management, uh, Kate Hale and myself, uh, drafted a government operations plan, um, which included staff guidance on the reopening procedures. Um, the current version is in front of you. Um, there's two documents. One is the employee return to work information and resources, and the other is operations and procedure, um, for reopening accounted facilities. These are living documents. These are gonna be updated and revised as we move along, as we open up, tweak things here and there, individual departments tweak their own plans. Um, so these are, are, are living. Um, the employee return to work is geared towards your easy read. Uh, a lot of illustrations there, kind of a general overview of the policies we've put in place, um, for the public as well as, uh, the employees, um, to establish safety, such as, um, with it, or I guess within, um, you have your message there from Mr. Hathaway right there in the beginning, welcome the employees back, kinda filling in what they've missed for those that have been out of the office. Um, information on PPE, how to order PPE, um, through the fire and rescue portal, uh, things like that, um, as well as building improvements that'll be made, or building, um, processes that'll be implemented, such as screenings, uh, temperature checks, um, as well as human resources items, um, for staff resources, um, if they have any issues coming back with stress, anxiety, and, um, as well as just general EAP, employee, um, assistance programs, information. Um, just your general resources that all staff should be aware of, but we're pushing it out again, uh, while we doing this relaunch. Um, the second is your operations and procedures. That's kind of the backbone, the underlying to the employee welcome, it's all your policies, the directives, things along those lines, the written in stone, um, if you will. Uh, in addition, there's a couple of policies, addressing return to work, um, after travel, if employees go out of the area or travel in heavily populated areas, and telecommuting, um, which we may see an increase in requests, um, and how to address those requests and policies to put in place for agreements, uh, between staff and, uh, their supervisor. Uh, with that being said, uh, we have a couple outstanding items. Um, like I said, the General Services is back today, full-time. Uh, so we still have a full sterilization of all county facilities to ensure safe reopening, um, for staff and the public. Um, a couple of building improvements still outstanding, a couple, um, a couple of sneeze guards. I think there's one or two that are still waiting to be installed or halfway installed, as well as signage. Um, we're releasing a signage package to all buildings, um, just templates that can be adapted to any facility we have. Um, and then we just have some finalized details to work through for specific departments, specific buildings. Uh, main Parks and Rec, prime example, they had with Fields, uh, visitor center, a completely different operation than we have here. Um, so we're tweaking a few things here and there. Um, but that's, that's where we're at with that. Um, are there any questions about the proposed? And we have a couple of staff here as well from, uh, different buildings, facilities that are working out plans. If there's any questions, um, for that as well.
Mr. Lockwood?
Uh, I was just wondering, how many of our folks are able to actually accomplish the telecommuting part of their job? Actually, how many of our staff are actually capable of performing their work at home? Is that something that's currently being done? I know there are some people doing it, but-
Correct. There are some doing it. Uh, we have a couple of limitations, obviously duties, whatever that position requires. Uh, it's geared more towards what their daily role is, what the tasks they have to accomplish rather than title. Um, you know, if someone has to be in to sign or mail things out, it, it's, I really don't have a number on the, the quantity, um, or the number of staff that can fully go remote. Uh, I, I guess you're asking for about a hundred percent of the time if they were to go out and not come back. Um, but-
Well, you know, it's something to think about. Space is freedom around here, so.
We can certainly look into that and get you an idea. Um, but most can telework for intermittently, I would say it that way. Um, they'd have to come in for certain things, but half their duties could be done remotely.
Okay.
If needed, of course.
Yep. How, just kinda taking a survey of, of staff, I mean, this is kinda the first day back after the announcement made. So what's, what's the general feel of people coming back into the office and, and that happening now?
We, I, I, I would say there's a little nervousness, uh, with staff right now. I mean, for a couple of weeks, we've been working towards the fifteenth. Um, and things were, are falling in line for opening on the fifteenth. And, um, by moving the schedule up a, a, a week, there, there is some nervousness, nervousness, uh, from the staff. And, you know, the signage isn't in place yet. Um, some of the other procedures that, uh, we have in our plan to put together, um, they're not quite ready, not quite in place yet. And I think that has caused staff to be a little nervous. And, and also, I'd like to state that, um, you know, based on the guidance I, I was given, I just notified staff on Friday, uh, that there's a potential for us to be open tomorrow. And, you know, just in the normal life of staff with childcare and dependent care in general, um, you know, there, there are some employees that, that need a little more time to, to plan and make those arrangements.
Well, it sounds like y'all are getting the job done. I mean, you know, you're turning out the permits and, and all that stuff. And, uh, I know that, um, treasurer is by appointment only now, and, and that seems to be going well. And I know that treasurer is by appointment only now, and, and that seems to be going well, so you know, I think that what you guys have done to this point has worked really well. And I think that taking your time and getting it open again, and, and people feeling comfortable doing it is, 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 is the way to go. So thank you to all of you, all, all of the staff that have kind of worked through this, and you guys for putting together the plan, so, thank you.
I would, I would be interested because of all activity in our, in our departments downstairs. I would be interested in hearing from our almost retired Mr. Jackson as to how your, your department is, is functioning. Please, sir.
Moving slow, so I guess I need to retire. As, as Justin said, we're actually operating 100%. We're taking plans in by mail, they're dropping them off to Dropbox. Some of the plans, if they're big, if they notify Dan at the front, we'll actually come up and pick them up, take them back downstairs, things like that. So we're, we're operating at 100%. I don't know if Justin had inspections or not. Like, like Justin said, the total permits since March 1st to June 5th, total permits, trades, building, all, is 520. Single-family dwelling permits that we've issued is 68. COs is 62. Total inspectors is 2,263 is what we've done in that time period. We're up on, on the permits from 590, 506 is what we did last year. The single-family dwelling is 68 this year, 51 last year, same, same time period. COs were at 62, we were at 55 last year. Inspections, we were at 1,757. So like I said, we're operating at 100%. And we, and we could keep on operating like that, you know, just, you know, without anybody coming into the office. I haven't heard of any complaints, you know, about the way we're running it right now.
I think I, when I spoke to you this morning, I think it was a telephone issue or something, that's the, that is, here one complaint. It was a rollover issue or something.
Yeah, it was actually the voicemail system was acting up, and we've corrected that, and actually switched it from what it, what it was.
And Ms. Evelyn, I learned today, late today, that they had the same thing that occurred in the Commissioner's office about the voicemail. Not rolling over or rolling over, whatever it did. And IT and their team fixed that. I think it happened over maybe a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, something like that.
It was actually caught in a loop for some reason. And it would run a couple of times, but then they could leave a message, but most of them wouldn't hang on for that length of time, or didn't hang on for that length of time, hung up, but...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
And while I'm up here, I would like to thank the board for the time that I've spent here. It's been a, it's been a pleasure working in New Kent, and a pleasure working for everybody here. If I'd have stayed till the 17th, it would have been 17 years, and that's a big part of my life. And I've given a lot to New Kent, but I appreciate everything that New Kent has given to me, you know. Might not miss that drive in every day, but I will miss seeing the people, and the people that, that I work with and the people I work for. So I appreciate this time.
Well, I'll tell you, Mr. Jackson, I can shuck oysters now without cutting my hand, so thank you.
That's good. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I think the other person we might want to hear from is HR. Ms. Whisker, if you'd come up.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to, to speak on a couple of things. I was just asked late last week for my opinion from the Return to Work Committee, because unfortunately, HR wasn't a part of it, so I was able to voice some of the concerns that I have seen personally, not only from an operational and a financial impact on New Kent County, which directly relates to the Families First Corona Response Act, FFCRA. The employees that have come to me prior to Mr. Hathaway's email was about half a dozen expressing concerns about what would be the plan. I unfortunately haven't seen the plan, I don't know, and, and that is today, most of the employees have not seen that plan. But as the email went out on Friday, that number doubled, and as of today, it's almost tripled. This evening, as I walked in, I was being approached by more employees. As I would say rumors are going around and they're hearing certain things, the anxiety level is quite high. They're expressing great concern to me, just anxiety about coming to work, what that means, what is the new normal? What am I going to be expected to do? Some of them are hearing what they're going to be expected to do, and they're not comfortable. They're going to be asking for reasonable accommodations through HR, and that is their legal right to do so. What we're also hearing is official request for Families First, which comes as a direct operational impact, which means they will not be here to help run departments, and it could be multiple people within a department, but it's also going to come as a financial impact to New Kent County. Under the Families First Act, if they are not able to get childcare for their dependent up to the age of 18, then we are to pay them two weeks at 100% pay, 10 weeks at 2/3 pay. And for salaried members, that, that number could add up pretty quickly.
So if you have a 16-year-old or 17-year-old kid, you can get it?
Unfortunately, yes, sir. And I cannot ask for proof. So if they have care at home, they can still request that. I'm also having FMLA requests for anxiety. I think that we do owe it to our employees to give them time to review this plan, to ask questions, to understand it, to prepare for that. We owe that to our employees. We need to be fully operational, but that means supporting our employees. I've had a lot of concerns, and I would expect that number to keep growing as more information comes out. But like I said, as of today, I have not even seen the plan myself. That is some of the information that I shared with Ms. Page and Mr. Evelyn at one of our meetings on Friday, and there's been more since that meeting, so I just wanted to kind of share that information. And to let you know, HR has been fully operational since all of this has taken place. We both are in the office every Monday, and then we take a rotating schedule from there. All phones are forwarded, all emails are forwarded, emails are answered always within the hour. So we also did open enrollment during limited staffing, which was a very interesting task, as you can imagine. Over 200 employees were able to either attend a live webinar from their computers or a recorded webinar. We also met with employees individually, got them paper versions if they don't have access to the internet, and it worked surprisingly very well. All of them were turned in on time, and all were submitted and correct. So I was very impressed with our teamwork and the way everybody has stepped up. But as the Director of HR, I just have to voice my concern over, we need to give our employees some time to review this plan and make sure that they understand it and give them time to prepare.
Thank you so much. I did get a call today too from Department of Social Services. A very proud John Marks that they have, with all the numbers that Mr. Stotter gave us, that they have processed all of their requests and, in a timely manner, and they have not had one late. And he said he thinks that, he doesn't know if it's because his staff is not seeing him every day or not, but they seem, their productivity, productivity appears to be up, so kudos to Department of Social Services as they see increased needs throughout our county. Any other comments or questions?
So this plan is... The, the recommendation is to open Monday, the 15th?
That's correct. No later than Monday, the 15th, but we are gearing towards Monday, the 15th. I'm, I'm sorry, no sooner than Monday, the 15th, but we are working towards Monday, the 15th.
How many employees do you think are going to try to take this? You know, with the...
The Families First.
Family First and anxiety and all those.
There, there, there's going to be some, but also with that number, whenever we open, if it's July 1st, there's still going to be some that's going to take advantage of that. I think there'll be more if we don't give them appropriate time to prepare, as I mentioned earlier, to make those arrangements at home. I definitely think that there will be more cases if we open up earlier.
I think that a week's time, you know, essentially a week, is kind of a tight timeline. I, I don't want to coddle people, but, you know, this isn't, this isn't the world we entered into, you know, back in March, when you could just move your kid to a different daycare or something, you know. It's not as easy kind of accommodating, especially people with children, or, or that may be taking care of older family members or, you know, something like that, and, you know, it, it would seem to me that we've done such a really good job to this point that to really feel like we, we should be pressured into it happening within a week, I don't, I don't see why we, you know, can't continue to offer the flexibility that we have now, especially for some of the people that are, that are, you know, feeling that anxiety, but, you know, or getting the job done seems to be what I'm hearing, and, you know, I, I don't know why we would feel like, you know, a week is all they get to kind of put their lives back together to come back to work. So, I mean, any discussion about it, you know, being two weeks instead of a week?
I'm definitely not for that, will not support that. I think it's time to come back to work. I mean, you got your first responders and the Sheriff's Department, and a lot of staff have been here each and every day. And I just feel like June 15th, most of those kids are going to be out of school anyway by then, so they should, they should have had all, you know, I know things are different, but they should have had some type of childcare arrangement. I don't know if the daycares are opening back up, but these kids are, well, they, they are opening back up. So I mean, I don't, I think they've done a really good job, kept things up, but I think it's time to get back to work.
Any other input, question, I mean, comments? Is this something we need a motion on?
Not, not a motion, but just consensus from the board, but I'll defer to our county attorney.
We do not need a formal motion.
So can I say the consensus of the board is that, Jesus. The consensus of the board is to, to work toward getting our staff updated as to our reopening, or not reopening, because we haven't been close, to our regathering of our staff here on June the 15th. Can we get that information out to all of our staff? Absolutely. I agree with Mr. Hathaway, and Ms. Evelyn, and Mr. Lockwood. I agree with all that absolutely, our staff has done a tremendous job in rotating and working from home. It is absolutely appreciated by all of us. However, I, I tell everybody, we have to move with caution, but not with fear. And so as we move cautiously, we have to, we're going to have to bring our county back up. And, but we'll do that in consideration of other feelings. Fortunately or unfortunately, we can't control the feelings of some, and so we can only do that by a well-planned, a well-planned return, which Mr. Stotter has been working on along with Kate, and we thank both of you for that. And so if we could get that to, to HR, or get that distributed, and so that everyone can see, absolutely, it is the consensus of the board. I, I feel as though I can say that, that we don't want anybody to be unsafe during this time and, and going forward. However, we have to move our county forward as well. And so I think New Kent has been very supportive in not furloughing anybody from the county. We have been, we have ribbed up on our PPEs and everything that takes to disinfect buildings. We have placed policies in place, masks to be worn. Today, everybody that came in went through a screening, that's the word, went through a screening, so we'll have screenings going on, and, and we can, we'll have to move from there. And if by some chance, and I'll say it very optimistically, if by some chance there is a great rise in numbers of outbreaks, then the county will come back and reevaluate where we stand. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll move on to the next item.
You got another one?
I, I have a few, I have a few. Strategic planning process. When we began our strategic plan, we initially said that this is a document that we wanted a lot of public input opportunities as part of our process. And I just want to inform the public, it will be out in the papers this Thursday, a schedule, it's also on our social media now, a schedule of public input charrettes that are planned. The first one beginning on Monday, June 22nd at 6:00 PM. The second would be Thursday, June 25th at 6:00 PM. And the, and a third one on July 2nd at 3:00 PM. These are public meetings where the public will have an opportunity to provide input on the work that our steering committee has done thus far. These will be Facebook Live meetings. And you can find the instructions on the county's Facebook page, as well as the Envision New Kent Strategic Plan Facebook pages as well. We want to encourage as much participation as we can. I'm very pleased with the amount of participation that we've had thus far into the process. We have completed a series of roundtables, about a dozen of roundtables, discussions on various topics that impact New Kent County, and we've had great, great turnout and participation so far in, in, in the process. So be on the lookout for our strategic plan, public input sessions. The next item I have is the New Kent County Roar and Soar event. This event is currently scheduled for October 31st at the New Kent County Airport from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's a five-hour event. Currently, we anticipate over 2,000 guests, based on the attendance from last year. The Rotary is a sponsor of this event, works very closely with Dwayne Goss, the airport manager, as well as Matt Smalnick, I saw him earlier. Okay. Matt Smalnick and our Economic Development Department. That planning group has contacted me and has asked me to present to you your input on whether or not, well, seek your input on whether or not that event should go on as planned. Again, it's Halloween, October 31st, from 10:00 to 3:00. My recommendation, which I've shared with Mr. Smalnick, is that there's a lot of unknowns there. It's a very tight area where people will congregate during this, this event. And based on the current guidelines that the governor has put out, my recommendation is that the event not take place during 2020. And we look forward to 2021. And again, that's based on the current executive order, number 65, that the governor has put out, and my opinion as far as our ability to comply with that, that mandate. But the planning committee is seeking guidance from the board on this issue.
Is that it? Oh, I thought you had some more.
Well, no, I do have another item after, after this.
I spoke with Mr. Smalnick last week as well, and I think he said he, you know, he thought it'd probably be a good idea to, to postpone it this year and start it up for next year, so I'm, I'm okay postponing it.
I believe there's consensus, or?
You're good?
We'll, we'll pass that along. New Kent County Farmer's Market is scheduled to take place this Saturday, beginning at 9:00 to 11:30. It will be in the high school parking lot. It will be in the high school parking lot. This first week, anybody interested in participating in the Farmers Market, you will need to go to our, either our website or our social media page to get the link to our vendors. And you'll have to preorder your items prior to Saturday. We're encouraging you to prepay, but it's not required. We'll set the vendors up in the high school parking lot, so individuals in the community can drive through and pick up their items, and they won't even have to get out their car. Being cautious as we deal with COVID-19, I feel that that's the best way to move forward at this time, as well as many Farmers Markets across the region are doing the same.
So, Mr. Hathaway, if I don't place an early order, I can't get anything Saturday?
That is correct. You have to preorder, you have to preorder in order to get any items. There will not be any sales during the day of the event. Right now, I believe, and this is as of last week, last time I checked with Krista, we had 14 vendors. That number may have changed. 15 now. All right. And I'd like to close my remarks today by thanking Clarence Jackson for his years of service and dedication to the county. And he is just someone that I've sought guidance from and I've enjoyed working with. When I first came to the county back in 2004, building and planning, we were all one department, community development, and we worked very closely back then and have continued to work closely since. So, definitely, we congratulate you, and you will definitely be missed. There'll be big shoes to fill. So, thanks, Mike.
I still plan on seeing you around Christmas time. I'll just put that out there. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. And so, as I have found out the hard way, if you don't preorder, you will not get anything from the Farmers Market. All the vendors are on the county Facebook page. So, go to the county Facebook page and pre-place, and you can prepay on that page. And the other thing I found out was, I think that as celebrity board member, Mr. Lockwood is, this is your last Thursday, with Proclaim and Grace, as they have their fundraiser auction. And if you have not seen him, you absolutely missed a Thursday evening comedy show, "We're for Purpose." So, we thank you for that. And truly, you'll be missed. I will tell you to the board, I have tried to get Clarence to stay, you know, with everything I knew. I tried bribery, well, not bribery, we won't say that on TV, but I tried to bribe him with a cake and everything, and I just couldn't get him to stay. So, when he told me about the grandbabies and his farm land, it just took me away. So, I said, okay, so we're going to let you go. But it was with the promise that he's going to always be visiting. So, we thank you, sir, for all you've done in serving this county. And, yeah, the last person left said that, and they changed their number. So, again, thank you. At this time, we will have our appointments delegated by district. And so, we will ask Mr. Tiller if you have an appointment, sir?
I have none.
Ms. Evelyn?
I have one. I move to appoint Daniel Williams as District 1's representative to the Purchase Development Rights Committee to serve a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2023.
All right. Mr. Lockwood?
I do not have any, Ms. Page.
Mrs. Sears?
I do not have any. Thank you.
I move to appoint Chris Gable as District 3 representative to the Purchase Development Rights Committee to serve a three-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending July 30, 2023. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Do we have any appointments not delegated by district? Mr. Tiller?
I have none.
Ms. Evelyn?
I don't see a bunch on here that need to be appointed.
I know.
I do a few of them. I move to appoint Larry Clark as New Kent County's representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, I move to appoint Pamela Pritchford as the private service provider representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2022. I move to appoint Dr. Diane B. Pollard as New Kent County School Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2022. I guess I can keep going.
I move to, I move to for John Mox as the Department of Social Services representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and then June 30, 2022. Okay. I move to appoint Ada Zaris as the Department of Health representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and then June 30, 2022. I move to appoint Bruce Call as a Juvenile Court Service Unit representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and then June 30, 2022. Ms. Evelyn?
Someone else want to do a couple?
Mr. Lockwood.
Where are we at, Daniel?
Yes, sir.
I move to appoint Daniel Rigsby as the Community Services Board representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending July 30, 2022. I move to appoint Jenny Stalarsky as the parent representative of the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2022.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. If all hearts and minds are clear, our next meeting schedule, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, July 14, 2020, and the next work session at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, June 24, 2020. Both will be held here in the boardroom of the County Administration Building. May we have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye. Meeting adjourned.